All right. Good evening. A call to order, the February 8 meeting of the Town of Washington Town Council. Before we begin, I would ask two matters. One, please wear a mask. This is not an order. I want to request to protect your neighbors out of respect and courtesy. And I see that everybody has, and I'm grateful to you. Second, if you speak at the microphone, please speak about, and this is also for Town Council members, so try to be about six inches. I've gotten that from our audiologist.
Yes.
That we are supposed to speak six inches. I was 12 inches away, and I was chastised. So we have the agendas, and I want to applaud, give me super duper applause to Barbara for putting together the agenda because yours truly forgot to push the button. So she had to do it the old-fashioned way, and she did an extraordinary job. So kudos to Barbara. Thank you for pulling it together. Before we get to the minutes, we should have an approval of the agenda. Let me have a motion to approve the agenda, and then we'll have a second, and then there may be some changes to the agenda. So we have a motion to approve the agenda. Brad?
I want a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, a second? I'll second. Thank you. Do we have any changes?
Yes, we do.
Yes, ma'am.
Under new business, add a public hearing. First, in addition to information, it should say information and possible action. I would break away public hearing as a separate item, and I recommend we put it up to the very beginning so that whoever's here for the public hearing on the SUP can leave afterwards if they want to. So I would put the public hearing piece up under the agenda.
Okay.
And then make that, I mean, just say special use permit.
All right.
And on.
All right.
Does that work, John?
Yes. So start with special use permit for patios cafe.
Yes. And just move the words public hearing for the SUP over at the top.
And add information and possible action.
Yes.
The other change or addition I'd like to have is, under new business, add as F, just a discussion of pathway, a new pathway being formed. So let's just put that as pathways. All right. Brad, are you all right with those changes to your motion?
Yes, I am.
Joe, you all right? All right. We have a formal vote to approve the agenda. Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we have approval. I will note that we have two members, Mary Ann Kuhn and Jean Goudin, who are not here at the Town Council meeting. All right, public hearing regarding a special use permit for patios cafe and other uses in the old post office building. I wanted to make sure that we're spelling this correctly.
One T.
One T. So I open it to the public.
And may I ask to accuse myself, please?
All right, Patrick is accusing himself. That's all right. Jean Goudin has just arrived.
Jean, will you get over here?
Jean, when you speak, speak about six inches from the mic.
You're so happy to have me.
Yes.
Not tall. Any comments or questions or thoughts from the public? All right. Without any further ado, I will close the public here. And at this point now, we will go back to our agenda. Patrick, I'm sorry, Patrick, I have to take you away and have you come back and get into the dirty business of government. We have two sets of minutes. For, unless there is objection, I would move that we set both sets in minutes.
A second?
All right. Is there any discussion, any corrections? Does it look good? Not hearing any. Voice vote to vote on the minutes, Patrick?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Jean, these are new business? All right, thank you. Those minutes for the January 11 and the January 15, 2021 meeting are approved. Reports. Thanks to the efforts of Kira Whitson and Tina, the first mistress for the Town of Washington, a post office, and especially to Jean Goudin, who offered the space, we now have a blue mailbox in the Town of Washington located at 353 Main Street in front of the Wine Loves Chocolate, or Chocolate Loves Wine, Wine Loves Chocolate store. So hopefully that will relieve some of the pressure on the patients, the good patients of the people of Sparrowville and the people of the Washington zip code. Second.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
How do we publish notices or fully so that people know that the box is there?
Well, hopefully they'll have something in the Rapahannic News that comes out of this meeting, and I will also talk to the gentleman at the MadRap, which is the other one.
And Barbara could send an email list.
Yeah. That's what I do.
If she has anything better to do.
Is the email list, is that also through all the town residents?
It includes anyone who has requests to be on the email list.
Okay. All right. Tell your friends, tell your name. The post, the pathway, I'm going to defer to the new business that we have, the post office, I'm going to defer to D under new business. And I did want to give publicly an update on the steps of the log house on Main Street. I have talked with the current occupant, and it's a little complicated, but we are working our way towards a solution. I hope that we'll have that well in hand by November.
That's great.
Yeah. So I want to thank Brad again for bringing that up, and the picture, I think, says a thousand words. That is my report. Ms. Swift?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. We're standing pretty well at our total account balances, but don't get too excited because we have this heart thing, the sewer mortgage, the sewer line again, so that would be $99,000 that will be coming due in May. That's the only comment I have on the report itself. I don't think there's anything unusual on the bills to be paid, but you might like to know why there's no Batson's on there. Joe Wank, who was doing our water meter readings, is having some vision issues and can't see the numbers as well. So he stopped November 16th, last month, and to give us time to decide what we want to do for our members or whatever. Barbara's adult son, Jacob, has stepped up the plate for the same rate that we've been paying Joe for the last 10 years. So thank you to Jacob. And the other one we had is Rebecca Batson. Her daughter was home from college, and when we discovered we didn't have all of the SUPs in one easy reachable spot, Rebecca being safe to go to the office with Barbara, had worked out there while she was home on break, and we now have, I believe, all of the SUPs that we were able to find all in rotation.
That's awesome.
So.
All right. Any more questions, Gail or maybe Barbara, please? Upstate Industries, obviously that's waste disposal.
On, no. On the general account, that's the repay for one of the dumpsters at the fireball.
Oh, okay. Why do we pay for one of the fireballs?
Because we take care of one, and that's where we condone all the trash from the town hall here than anything else we have.
All right.
More of an issue of more active year.
Yeah.
What is coming?
Any other questions? Ms. Swift, would you like to then make a motion to approve the bills?
Yes.
Of rebate?
We'd like a motion, our legal motion to approve the bills to be paid.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Thank you, Joe. Voice vote to approve, Patrick?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brad, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. And then, any other report from you, Gail?
That's it.
Okay. Planning Commission did not meet. Do you know that they planned to meet? Does anybody know if they planned to meet at the end of this one?
I would doubt it. I don't think they have anything that would allow them to meet by his own.
Okay. Architectural Review Board, Drew, you got anything coming up?
Nope.
Patrick?
Hey.
Yep, no meeting, no meeting this one. Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Bennett, you have the board.
Nothing to say. I'll have something more.
I love those golden words. All right. We have, it appears, nothing under old business. So under new business, we have a special use permit for patios cafe and other uses in the old post office building. So it's a permit to expand restaurant and cafe operations, and outdoor seating and food I think this is a time for, oh, Patrick, excuse yourself again. Patrick O'Connell is accusing himself. At this point, comments from members of the Town Council?
What is the proper spelling? Because I have P-A-T-T-Y capital P-S, and I'm on this special use permit, it's P-A-T-T-Y-O P-S capital.
That's the one. P-A-T-T-Y capital O P-S.
Okay.
So up here, it has the O.
I know it.
I know it. When, back.
Okay. Sorry, Bob.
There'll be a big sign in front of you, too.
That will determine it for sure.
Bob, what was the correct spelling?
P-A-T-T-Y-O, how's your P-S?
P-T-T.
There you go.
Two.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right.
Space O's.
I have a question from Slide 12. It shows a sidewalk going by what would be the patio cafe, and there isn't one there now.
That's right.
So what's the plan for that?
We're going to build it.
And how will it tie in with?
I'm sorry?
How, how, I'm speaking with a mask, it's hard to hear each other, but how will it tie in, where will it end, what's?
It'll be connected from the corner where the sidewalk is, and it'll go in front of the, all the way to the Carter, the Carter House now. And it'll have a brick border and an aggregate, just like in front of all the properties.
So in other words, it will go the same length across the front that the sidewalk and the post office have.
And the entrance will be connected to that, so maybe two-thirds down on the building where the jetted out part is, you can see on the drawings.
There is one tedious step that's incorrectly mentioned, that there was no sidewalk on the plans, and I see that there is a sidewalk.
Now, is there a determination from where the old one was?
Yes.
And since I own a property adjacent to that, is that, does this mean it'll go down to where my property currently has a brick?
No, there's a sidewalk in front of the Carter House. It'll just end where our property is. It won't continue on to your property.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. So it would end at that corner?
At the Carter House.
Where my property has a brick parking place.
Well, there's an existing sidewalk in, or the parking landing area in front of the Carter House. You know, the red roof, we call that the Carter House.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, so the sidewalk will go from that parking area in front of the cafe to the corner, just in front of the cafe.
It's not at the corner before your property.
Yeah, and there isn't really an existing sidewalk in front of Carter House.
No, it'll run into that aggregate parking area right to it.
Okay, okay.
So you're not replacing it, you're just bumping up to?
No, 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 we're not, we're not expanding the sidewalk in front of the Carter House, if that's what you're asking.
Well, but it'd just be a new sidewalk.
That's right.
I think, I have talked with many residents in town who are very excited about the opportunity of this coming to the town. I think it will be a boon to the town tourism and in a number of other ways. So I think this will be wonderful. My wife and I are going to work very hard to restrain ourselves from the fatigue that you're going to have in the back, and try really hard to be good about that.
Do we have an opening day yet so we can line up?
Nice work.
Yeah, take it from me, don't, don't give opening days.
No.
Any other comments from members of the Town Council?
Shall I make a motion?
You may make a motion.
I would love to make a motion and we accept and approve the special use permit application for Patios Cafe.
Is there a second? Also, thank you, Joe. Voice vote to approve?
Just come here if I may.
Thank you.
I have a formal motion that spells out a few more things. Just, I want to, I want to say this out loud and make sure I've got it correct. So approve a special use permit for the owner of the building, common with the old post office building, to use the entire first floor of the structure for restaurant and associated uses. Is that correct, first floor?
Yes.
Okay. And further, to use the front and side of the lot and the area of approximately 1500 square feet for outdoor restaurant and associated uses.
Okay. Gail, I heard you say that in your motion.
I did.
And Joe, you were?
I absolutely did.
Okay. All right. Mr. Bennett, we ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
I say yes?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
All right. It is approved. All right. Mr. O'Connell, come back and join us.
Thank you all very much.
As I said, we're all looking forward to it.
Good idea. We'll have a special opening for town residents.
All right, moving on. Topsoil removal from the post office site. Mr. Brad, Mr. Schneider?
I'm working with Tim Frederick, you know, helping to keep the project moving along, and there was a large pile of soil that was pushed up close to the road. And so what I offered was, rather than hauling that miles and miles and miles away, that they could move that pile down to the treatment plant, they would use some soil back for final grading, so that anything that's left after they're done, they're going to bring in a piece of equipment and grade and level it all out, that whole open space, as you come to the treatment plant on your left, and that could ultimately be a pad for conventional building that we'd like to see out there for the treatment plant owners.
That's great.
Yeah, so we get, then we could have some fill material and it can be graded, and it doesn't cost us anything to do that.
Wonderful. Mr. Bennett, I don't know if we need to do any action on this. Do we need to have just a voice vote?
Voice vote would be fine, but it should be in minutes.
Okay. So let's have, we'll have just a voice vote, motion, Brad represents a motion to approve the removal of the topsoil from the post office site to be moved to a location to the east of the wastewater plant.
Yes.
Yeah? All right. And I will second that motion. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of such action, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. General report, Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, I put this up there, I have not had a chance to reach out to Mr. Curry, but in a number of communities across the country, they're taking water samples and doing some testing, and what that does is it can give a approximately in one week notice of possible COVID activity. So I've already talked to ESS about this. It is not a test that they normally run. They would go to a different laboratory, but it can be done. So what I want to do is reach out to the county and see if a similar, you know, if there'd be an interest, and they do that, it's very good off of their system, and if so, maybe the county will take up the cost to do that test. So, you know, I can reach out to the administrator and see what his thoughts are on that.
Okay. Sounds wonderful.
What would the cost be?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
What about?
I'm going to say it's probably about $50 or $100 per test. So that's where, you know, if the county could do it in the interest of, you know, protecting the public health in the county, you know, they might say, yeah, that's a great idea to give us an early warning to a possible outbreak.
Gail, could we return all the boats remaining with any COVID?
Yeah, we would, yes. That's my answer.
So I'll try to check, I may have some response for next meeting.
All right, so it doesn't sound as if there's any action that needs to be taken at this time?
No.
All right. Next item on the, on the agenda is report on the Board of Supervisors presentation. I had a chance to give a presentation about, or to have a discussion with members of the Board of Supervisors at their February 1 meeting about post office, and gave them a rough timeline of where things were. The footers have been put in, they covered the ground where the pad is supposed to go, but I don't believe the pad has been poured yet.
No, the pad hasn't been poured because they covered it ahead of the previous storm and we've got another storm that we're going to come this week. So I talked to Tim, so I'm not sure what plans to get in there, but as soon as they can start back in the site, everything's going to go crazy.
Yep.
Now, I heard that one of the footers didn't pass inspection?
It did, from what I understand, it did eventually pass inspection, but I don't know for sure.
Okay.
But that's what I would like to know.
They did, they did have to go deeper than the original plan. But I know the inspector was out there the morning that I was out there. I got there about noon, and he'd already approved everything, so I think everything's fine.
Yep.
So just as a follow-up to that, I'm working with our contractor, we have to do a lot of our sewer water repairs. And what we're going to do on the sewer, there's a small issue that in order to connect, as we come up Warren Avenue, it's a very, very tight area, and it runs right parallel to our water line. So with conventional equipment, it'd be difficult to get a sewer line in at the right depth. Neither we do, we have to sleeve it in order to provide secondary containment, because by code, sewer lines must be deeper than water lines. So we're kind of struggling there. And there's also the presence of a very large maple tree. It is not on the post office site, so, you know, first solution is, the chains are, but that's.
But actually, the first solution is you cut the trench, and unfortunately, the tree would probably die.
Right.
Because we cut too much of the roots.
Right, you cut too many roots. So then the next thing is, well, then take the tree out. The third solution, which I am waiting to get some numbers for, is to actually do horizontal boring, in which they'll actually go right under the tree and up to the connection point. So we're going to try and, let's say, try to get some numbers on that, see what that's going to take. And then similarly, the water connection was going to come off of Warren Avenue. However, where the water line runs may be under the very edge of the asphalt, and if we touch the asphalt, we involve Vida. So we had a six-inch line that goes up to the wastewater treatment plant, that parallels Leggitt Lane. So there again, with this boring contractor, and I had a crag from coming to water, you know, walked and went back and forth, we think the best way is to come off Leggitt Lane, and again, first approach would be trench, if we've got someone doing the boring, we can actually go right under the Leggitt Lane, not disturb the road surface, and come up, and then all Tim would do is swing 90 degrees instead of going to Warren Avenue, he'd have a line coming straight to Leggitt Lane, and, you know, that'll be fine. And he wants to get all that done before much of the parking office is underway, so that's where I'm trying to push to get these two utilities put in place, that I'll be coordinated with him on this. So, but as soon as I get numbers, I'll present those to you, Mr. Mayor.
Now, I have a question about that. Is the tree on someone's private property, or is it on the right way?
It's, it's, I don't know exactly where the right way is, because it's 20 feet from the center line of the road, but I believe it's, it's probably in that gray gray zone because it's right under the power lines, and those are usually in the right, there's a right way there. But I think for purposes of what we're doing, we're making a determination that it's actually on private landlord's property.
Which one's it recording?
It does, but if we go under it, we shouldn't have no problem.
And that was suggested by one of the members of the town residents who had had that happen when the original sewer was done, and her tree was preserved. So it was a great, great suggestion.
Yeah.
So we're all praying to have that happen. Couple more things in the report to the Board of Supervisors. They would like to have the post office open by June 1, and they are working very hard towards that date. Some of you may know that members, residents of the town have been very concerned that the, the post office that was proposed, which is perfectly fine, it was on a highway, doesn't, I think, show a lot of character, and its style is fairly basic. So a group of conservative citizens got together as a task force to begin raising funds to get a higher pitch on the roof so it matches the pitch of all the other, or most of the other roofs in the town. So instead of a 412, it would be an 812 pitch. Also, they have a metal standing seam roof instead of a, one of those tar asphalt or asphalt. asphalt tile roofs, and a couple of other enhancements. So you will find if you are a resident of the town or a resident who has a 22747 address, that you will be receiving a love note from the members of the task force, asking you to consider contributing through the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation for this fund. To use the, to use, the board of directors of the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation will, will know that the funds were given towards the Washington Post Office Enhancement Fund, and they will make the final decision as to its use. We are confident that it will go for the use that, that, that it's being raised for, and we are very excited about that. And so as Brad said, because of the delays that are caused by the succession of storms, including ones I guess are coming this upcoming weekend, I suspect when things dry out enough that they come, there will be a massive flurry of activity going on. Perhaps I shouldn't use the word flurry. Anyway, that was the report to the Board of Supervisors. They have asked me to come back at the March 1 meeting to talk, I'm sorry, to have a discussion about boundary line issues. So that will be happening then. Any questions? Any more questions from members of the town council? I'll open up any questions from the public? All right, I'd like to acknowledge members of the task force who are here, Nancy Button and Drew Mitchell. Drew, especially for all the work that you did to get this meeting done. We had met for several hours on Saturday, and my fingers are still sore from stuffing, stamping and doing all that. So it's all been done. That's it for the Board of Supervisor's presentation. Gail, I'm going to turn it over to you for scheduling a work session for the fiscal year 21.20 budget.
Thank you. First, Mr. Bennett, can we do a work session, budget work session, that we advertise everything? Can we do that via Zoom? Because it's budget.
Yeah. The way, the way I interpret the relative state statute is that what's necessary to keep the town functioning relates to the emergency, and certainly the budget will be one of those.
Okay. Thank you. I think we can all feel much safer, we can do as much by Zoom as we possibly could. So we're looking at a Saturday morning, the end of either February 20 or 27?
Exactly.
And I would say 10:00?
10 to, 10 to 2?
I wouldn't say it the most because we're going to be having more than, this is just going to be the beginning work session. We'll have at least one more meeting or work session.
All right. All right, so we'll say 10 to 2 PM? That block. Is there anybody who, is there any preference either for the 20th or the 27th from members of the town council?
What day do we?
Either, is that our day?
Possibly not.
Okay.
This work session does not require everybody to be in attendance.
Just enough for a forum?
Yes, just enough for a forum. This is just going to be a down and during, to use the phrase, review of putting some numbers or, and reviewing some numbers. Next week, Barbara, Brad and I are going to be getting together for an hour or so and just to look at numbers, specifically projections.
Well, I propose the 27th. That'll give us a little more time for you guys to get kind of squared away before we meet. So I'm going to propose February 27th from 10 to 2 PM as a schedule for a work session. Mr. Bennett, so we would use the normal operating procedure for advertising that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right.
And will we continue this meeting?
It's an option, yeah.
And we can just continue this meeting?
The notice is filled in.
Doesn't that build in a forum department or something?
Be not taking any, it's just work session. The decision won't take any, it's action.
No.
All right, well, and it may be continuation from another meeting that we will talk about in a few minutes. So February 27th, just a, either just a voice vote rather than a roll call vote. February 27th, 10 AM to 2 PM. All those in favor of that time, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you. We'll put that on our calendar for the 27th from 10 to 2. And obviously, the public is invited to come for a scintillating session.
I'm sure they'll be very excited.
The pile item we have under new business is a resident in the county who owns property in the town, Jimmy DeBerg, met with me, and he has offered to basically cut through the scrub rush. They need a path about five feet wide that will go through the back of this property, which is adjacent to the Washington School at Mount Salem Avenue, and extending down the hill at a diagonal to cut off the steepness and to bring it to meet the, most of going through the woods would be going through town property. It would end up being in the field to the west of the wastewater plant, at which point it could curl around the wastewater plant and then be able to hook in to Leggett Lane. It would allow people to have a walking path, which I understand there used to be one time long ago when Washington School wasn't the school, that people would, students after school would head out and run down that path to go fishing at the pond with the black kettle. So the particulars on this are mentioned. We're going to be seeking funds to make a more permanent path, probably following this, this path in the future. But the benefit of this path is that it would allow a reasonable connection between Mount Salem Avenue and the post office. And it would provide a way to begin creating a network of paths throughout the town, which is one of the prime points in the town's comprehensive plan from several years ago. So I bring those to your attention as members of the town council. There is no cost that Mr. DeBerg is going to be charging us. He is doing this out of the goodness of his heart. He and I walked it the other day, and I think we have a good idea of how it's going to go. I've also talked to one of the owners of the Washington Schoolhouse, and he was in support of this path as well, although it will not cross their property. And I bring to you and open to any questions that members of the town council may have.
I'm listening. Is there a plan for having a path that's more centrally located than that? I mean, the Washington School is pretty much on the outskirts.
Yes. You're talking about a path from the town to the post office?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we are in process on that as well.
Because that, I think, would be...
Yes.
Fast and forward, actually.
Yeah, I agree. And we're going to work on that. But when we do that, that's going to be a more substantial path, once we get that built. So we're in the process of getting some, some professional advice on that, and then we'll go out and seek funds for that.
Mr. Mayor, so it's the sense of council that that should happen, there should be some resolution adopted, some action by council to approve it and put it into the minutes. I guess at this point, it would be arrangement at will, that upon 30 days, probably just from the town, the right could be canceled, but relocated if necessary.
All right, can we do this as a voice vote or do we need to do a?
I think a roll call vote.
Roll call vote? All right. Can we just adopt what you just said?
Yeah.
And Mr. John, have you heard from the girl?
The motion is... Town grant permission for construction of this path as described at will, which would be revocable upon 30 days notice, revocable or be relocated if the other party agrees.
Joe?
And John, that doesn't put us in any legal...
The only question I have is is it covered under the town's liability policy? That's all that landed off the onus for sure.
All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second for the resolution?
All second.
All right. Brad, I think just being...
I'm not just going to move things.
Roll call vote to approve. Patrick?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Public forum, we open it up to the public. Yes, ma'am?
Nancy Button of Main Street. Oh, the path going back there would be gray and I walk back there a lot in good weather. Perhaps not get too complex about it. You know, they had a long path going through the planted area where...
Nancy, I'm sorry. Do you mind going through the, so that they, we can catch all your good thoughts?
I walk back there a lot. Perhaps not get too complex with the development of a path. They've had a path through the grass, the wetland area, but that's all gone. You know, it's been let go because they tried to make a very complex path. Perhaps just a plain grass path that is kept mowed. If it's five feet wide, it can be mowed with everything else because the path that goes from Piedmont Avenue down to the sewer treatment plant is just grass. And if it's mowed, it's fine. It's a good walk. So keep it simple.
Yes, ma'am. I agree completely. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? And I will close the public forum and vote for continuation. Before we talk about that, we should talk about, there is a need for us to have a meeting, Mr. Bennett, I believe by the 19th, to talk about the flood lane.
I don't think there's really going to be, we don't have any plan in the flood lane anymore.
Right.
When we reprove the math, because everything came out. I've actually called back to representative twice over the past months and never had a call returned because she said there were implications. My first thought with her, that if the ordinance wasn't adopted, some of the other, but we never went into the details. And I haven't learned what that is. But this February 19th deadline, you know, she gave us a deadline last year too. So I would say before council, as the inconvenience of going through a special meeting, that we try to find out more about what's what, if I can speak with her. And I don't think it's going to involve adopting any of those.
Is it worthwhile just to, at this meeting, just to put down the possibility of a Zoom meeting on the 16th at 7:00 PM? And then we can always cancel it if we need to?
We could, yes, sir.
And then, is it also possible, because we may not be at that meeting, to also have a continuation for a work session on February 27th from 10 to 2, 10 AM to 2 PM? Can we also do that at this meeting?
Yes.
Then those are the two proposals that I put forth to the town council.
What was the time on the Zoom meeting on the?
I would presume 7:00 PM?
17.
On the 16th?
16, I'm sorry.
Does that work for everybody? That may or may not happen. And Barbara will get notice out to everyone as soon as she hears from Mr. Bennett. Is that required roll call vote or a voice vote?
Roll call.
Roll call. All right, so I am making a motion to continue this meeting to a meeting via Zoom on February 16th, which I believe is a Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, thank you. At 7:00 PM. And also a continuation of the meeting thereon to February 27th from 10 AM to 2 PM for a budget work session. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Gail, a second, thank you. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn? All right, yes, we're not adjourned, we're continuing. We're done. Thank you, everybody.